We rise on the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting?
Yes.
Are there any corrections? If there's no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion is seconded. Open the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Anybody have any mail? If not, we'll move on. Attorney is gone. We'll be back. Do we have any committee reports from... From Budget Committee at all?
Dale, did you ever do a share? Well, one thing that you don't already know, uh, that to inform the rest of the council, the Budget Finance Committee, being Mike and Mark and myself, Matt, the sheriff, um, what day it was that night?
Thursday, last week.
Thursday. Thursday, last week. And went over some... They put together a packet for us that would be probably useful at, uh, in budget hearings. But as everyone knows, starting today, there's some new sentencing guidelines for the state of Indiana goes into effect, and they've reclassified, uh... I'm sure the judge could speak to this much better than I could, but the state is now saying that they're no longer going to house Class D felony convictions. They want those to stay in the local jails. But at the same time, Class Ds are no longer going to be called Class Ds. They're going to be called Class 6.
Level 6.
Level 6, okay. And, um... So if we're going to keep Level 6 offenders in the local county jails instead of going to, uh, state prisons, they are going to reimburse the county for housing by exactly how much, I'm not sure. And how many of those we would house would depend on how the courts work, a la...
Well, and the Level 6, which is used to be D felony, which is the lowest class of felony, is Judge Erkel's court, so I don't want to horn in too much on his business. But that's... Almost all of that is except the neglect of a dependent, which Circuit Court does, because I also have Chin's jurisdiction, and those crimes tend to go with Chin's cases. But Judge Erkel does 95% of the Level 6 felonies.
Okay. So as the, uh... The report that the sheriff put together for us, um, was basically a, uh, an example of what the first six months of this year would bring in revenue from the state for housing Class Ds or Class 6, Level 6 felonies in the local jails. And they estimated that that would have been, uh, $233,695 to the county for the first six months of this year. Now, now that the levels have changed and everything, and we really don't know how exactly the courts are going to handle this new leveling system, we've got the remaining six months of this year to live in the real world and see what this... Whether this is comparing apples to apples or oranges to oranges. And, of course, there's... Everyone has, uh, different ideas of how that money could be used. So we will monitor as closely as we can how the thing actually works. And I'm sure that this will be a subject of discussion during budget hearings in August. Hopefully by then we'll have enough feel for it, know what to expect going forward. Um, that's all I have to say about that. Am I telling this correctly?
You're correct.
Okay. Um, also today, I... The county surveyor handed me a thing where, uh, I think we do definitely want to take advantage of. And it'll require that the county auditor to certify to the state that, uh, that we have in our employ a county engineer, which our current county surveyor is also a licensed and registered engineer. So he can legally be the county's engineer. With that certification to the state comes a $20,000 annual subsidy from the state toward his salary. So there's an opportunity to get $20,000 a year from the state to subsidize that salary in the surveyor's office that we've never had before. And I would certainly recommend taking advantage of that. And that's another thing that, you know, we've got plenty of time to take care of, but I just wanted to share that with you because I just had it handed to me today. So, um, that's the end of my report unless anyone has any questions.
I've got a question. That $20,000, would that, with his salary, be upped a little bit, or...
No, actually, that's, uh... Actually, we can just call out a gift that would be... It's supposed to come back to the county's bridge fund.
Any other questions for Councilman Strong? If not, Wage Committee? Any report?
I think they had a meeting, Mike, while I was going, so I don't know. Wasn't nothing done, was it?
No, there's nothing done. Basically, we said that we felt our hands were tied right now. We have another meeting scheduled for Debbie. It's the 10th, right?
Yes.
Next Tuesday?
I've already...
At 12 o'clock, correct?
Yeah, correct.
And, um, but we told right now until we get through this budget, we felt our hands were tied. We're going to have to wait and then make a decision then on what we may be able to do.
Okay. All right. Any questions for any one of the Wage Committee? If not, I'm going to back up to the county attorney. Did you have anything?
Unless you want me to address the requirement of an engineer for...
I would not. Okay. No.
Nothing right now unless anyone has any questions for me?
There's no questions, I'm going to move on to our Economic Development Director, Mr. Dan Parker.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening. Since my last report to, uh, this council, there's been a lot of activity. We've seen some promising changes in, uh, the landscape, the business landscape here in Connersville and Fayette County. I'm happy to report there's a, although it's hard to quantify, uh, the visits I've made to the businesses in the city and county, a positive attitude and some, uh, certainly some signs of expansion in a lot of the businesses up north. Uh, I think you're all aware of the groundbreaking we had for Alex Carroll and his lifeline Organic Farms late in April. And as just an update, I spoke to him recently, and they have plans to make a big push in construction just after the 4th of July. Also during this period since I spoke to you last, we've opened or we've helped open or celebrated the openings of Hardee's Restaurant, Goodwill, and Foles Floor Covering. We also had a very nice, uh, open house and ribbon cutting for Wayzetta. I want to make sure I get the pronunciation correct. The correct pronunciation is Wayzetta. I was told that by the company officials, so I want to make sure I have it correct for you and the listeners tonight, the viewers tonight. Uh, certainly wanted to thank the Economic Development Group, the Board of Directors, and the Chamber Commerce Director and her volunteers for helping with the tour of Wayzetta and the refreshments. Also want to thank Jean Leising and Cindy Zemke for being there, plus our elected city and county officials who took part. And the... Want to thank the 17 local merchants that cheerfully gave close to $1,000 worth of door prizes to show their support in this business getting underway. It's also public knowledge that yesterday's café on Park Road is undergoing a transformation, that, uh, there's construction going on. I visited that restaurant and spoke to Randy Nichols, and they're doing some, uh, some really nice things in there. It's going to be a really nice restaurant when he's finished with it. It's also public knowledge that the old Bob Evans is going to be reopened as a Japanese steakhouse. There's some other exciting things happening that I wish I could tell you about from an industrial standpoint, but I cannot. What I can tell you is that from an attitude standpoint, after visiting 34 businesses here in Connersville, things are improving. People are smiling again and having a, uh, an upbeat attitude and a positive attitude about the future. Um, and with few exceptions, these businesses tell me that things look bright and, uh, that things are looking better for Connersville and Fayette County. I certainly want to thank each one of you. I've had the privilege of meeting with each one of you individually, either in my place of business or at yours. And I appreciate the counsel and wisdom you guys have given me. Everybody except Mr. Strong, and we're going to set a date and get together. But all the rest of you, including Shirley, who's not here, have met with me one-on-one, and I appreciate the time that you guys have spent with me in sharing your wisdom. Uh, I guess you could count 35 and 36 businesses if you count, and 37 if you count Russ, Jim, and Mark, because I went to your businesses and I didn't have those in my count. So there's three more businesses that I've visited. I appreciate your support at BDG, and that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions?
I'm not going to put Dan on the spot and ask him why he can't tell us what he knows, but I understand. I know you'd like...
I'm just following the tradition of my predecessors. That's what they've all done. I can't... If I could, I certainly would.
I understand, but I had to gouge you a little bit.
One of the things that, uh, that is being discussed, I can tell you this much, that we're looking at businesses that will cash in on this abundance of water that we have. And if you take water as far as the imagination can take it, uh, therein lies the business.
A water park?
I didn't say that. I can not confirm or deny anything, but certainly something that uses water. And it could be, it could be very good.
For us, one of our biggest resources.
It is. Truly is.
I got a question, Dan.
Yes.
Mark. I know, I know you can't, you know, disclose who you're talking to, and I understand that doesn't make perfect sense. But I guess that what frustrates people more than anything from what I hear is if we could have a timetable, when are they going to make a decision, like within two months, three months? And I know sometimes they can't. It's hard for them to do that. But that, it just, it seems like it just goes on. Well, yeah, they're still thinking that, they're still thinking that.
And Mark, some of the, and some of the information that really never hits the street or never really is made public is some of those businesses don't pan out. Uh, and don't want to be, uh, they don't want any publicity over their failure to come or the change of their minds. And then other businesses come on and... And I hate to say it, just trust me, because that sounds like a used car dealer, but, uh... As things become available, we will certainly let you know. Uh, timetable on some of these that we're looking at, certainly from an industrial standpoint here in Connersville, where there would be some upticks in the employment, uh, we're, we're playing a waiting game on a few things, but there's going to be some, some good things happening without revealing anymore. I wish I could. They would hang me out here in the parking lot if I did, so... Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from our Commissioner Representative.
We don't have many items to talk to you about, but we have some money problems. One, one thing I want to tell you, Ben Houston is resigning his position. He's leading us to 18th of the month, so we have to scramble around and try and get somebody to replace him, because we have to have, we have to have that position. So we'll be putting out applications and interviewing people and trying to get somebody in here by the 18th of the month. As we told you last month, Jay, um, our highway supervisor is going to have to retire the 8th of August in order to not have a big deduction on his, on his pension. We advertised that position. Uh, we got five applicants. We interviewed the five applicants. We have a starting salary. We have a starting salary of $26,800. One of the person, one of the applicants was not working. The other, the other four all made considerable amount of money above that, $38,500, $43,500 a year. But nobody is willing to take a cut in pay to come be our highway supervisor, be on 24-hour call. The one man who possibly could take that, um, that amount of money lives 40 minutes away. That's in the summertime, which to me is about an hour and a half in the wintertime. So we, it's going to be very difficult to hire a supervisor for the, for the kind of money that we're offering. That's, that's why you have in front of you a $144 to raise that salary up. Jay would like to stay as their supervisor, if there's some way we can figure out that he could do it and not, and not lose his pension and not, uh... Not take a big reduction in his pension when, when he does take it. He's talking about $150 a month if he don't retire by the 8th of August. Uh, he did tell me, he did tell me today that, you know, he would stay and not retire, or to make, to make things even for what he's going to lose on his pension. That's going to require about $45,900 a year. So you tell me what you want, what you want to do with that business. Twenty-six, eight, I mean, that's the... It's just not enough money to hire a qualified person. We advertised, we took a interview. All that was good. I've asked everybody down, uh, who works for the highway department now, if they would be interested in applying. None undo. Because, frankly, the ones that have been there while are making almost as much as what, as what this starting salary is. So there's no incentive to be on call 24 hours a day and take over the goof for $3,000 or so a year.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
The others are four. What, were they from Fayette County or...?
Two was from... Two was from Fayette County, I believe.
Two were from Fayette?
Two was from Fayette County, one was from out of Fayette County. They lived close to Fayette County. Two of them, two of them that lived in Fayette County withdrew, one of them withdrew consideration that day, irregardless of the money we give. The second, the second one from Fayette County called me up and withdrew, um, a few days later, even, even though, regardless of salary, said he wouldn't take it because, um, he didn't have any help, you know? So we're down, we're down to about no possibility. Like I said, we've got one man whom I considered, but who lives 40 minutes away. So it's going to, you know...
So we have one person, and that person lives out of Fayette County?
Yes.
State, he lives on the state...
He lives on State Line Road in Franklin County. And he told us that when he came over here to interview, it took about 40 minutes to get here. And I would assume in the wintertime, when, when he has come in a lot, that that travel time would be, you know, and he's not interested in moving. I mean, his home is where it is. So we're, we're kind of a loss. What, the best? The best solution we could have for this is if we could figure out a way for Jay to stay. The highway department is running good. Uh, he knows, he knows the job inside out, but you can't blame the man for not wanting to take $150 a month deduction on his pension if you don't. So that was, that was, that's the reason for the 40, well, I put in $45,000 for that $144, to bump that, to bump that starting salary up there, or whatever you want to do. But we've got to have more money someplace to hire them. And we're, we're going to run into this, you know, without any jobs we have coming along. Our starting salaries are just way too low. Now onto the second part of the news. Today was the day we took the bids for our highway garage. Those bids came in from $752,400 with an $85,000 deduct for, um, the office finish inside, if we, if we done that ourselves, to $892,676. $752,400 was, or $793,500 is the high one, I guess. $752,400 was, was the lowest bid we had. They'd take $85,000 off if we, if we wanted to do the interior of the building ourselves. The high school, vocational school would be willing to put it on their schedule to do. They would, uh, they would not do the furnace work. They would hang, they would hang the plumbing, put the drywall up and such as that. But it'd have to be on their schedule. They would be probably, probably next semester. They might be able to start it on in November. But if you done that, you'd still have to buy the file materials. So basically, you get a $752,400 bid is what it's going to cost you.
Where are your bids from?
Well, I'll just read them off if you want to. We've got Dewise Construction, $804,650. Obdugal Pierce from Fishers, $892,676. Maxwell Construction, Greendale, Indiana, for $840,000. Monroe Construction from Kokomo, $813,175. Ronavon Construction from Shelbyville, $752,400. It's my rally general contractor that's up here in Richmond, $868. Thor Construction in Richmond, $793,500. And I'm not sure. I can hardly read. It's $743,500. $793,500.
So none of these are pre-engineered buildings?
Those are all, those are all pre-engineered buildings.
Because when I talked to you back in September, I had a price here, square footage prices, and it went $17 to $20 per square foot. We should bring a $357,000 to $420,000. Now that's not with, that's, that's just a bare bone building. That's not...
And that's not a garage.
That's a garage. That's with a cement slab?
Well, I, I, Mr. Mays is here who designed the building. You know, if you have some questions, uh, he needs to address it. He'd like to do that for you.
Okay. Well, what I'm saying is, is this is an outfit out of Ohio that I've asked, that we speak to. We haven't done that. And I know that this price will go because...
We advertised, we advertised the bids for anybody that want to bid on it.
Okay. Well, these people were not made aware of it. And this is somebody I brought to our attention back in September, in 2013. Now, I'm sure that once they saw what was on the plans, this could be addressed. This doesn't include doors. This doesn't include so a lot of different things, but...
You will speak to that, David.
They've been just from Mays line, designing engineer.
Yeah, and he says he, he says he's got firm open in Ohio that could do this for $340,000.
No, that's, that's not looking at your plans. I have no idea what is included in your plans. This is for a shell building with six inches of insulation, ceiling, four inches of insulation in the walls, not including bays, cement slab, and building it, doing everything, not including office space. So I have no idea what's inside, inside this building.
Without having the information, I'll go over the hotspots, potential, just again, I'm not saying they're wrong or right what they're saying. Things that they would have to include is a requirement of the Indiana Building Code. You have to have, they do engine work on these vehicles. You have to have an exhaust evacuation system in the building to connect these two. That's just a flat requirement when you're doing engine work within the building. A lot of people leave off as an energy code requirement, half the building has to be, meet Indiana Energy Code requirements for this area. You have to do a comm check, evaluation report. So the amount of insulation in the walls, roof, based on the type of heating and cooling system you put in the building, you got to do an evaluation of that entire system and send it through and show that you're meeting the Energy Code. I don't know if their system would meet that or not without running the particulars of their program, because that's one thing I've seen left out a lot of buildings by contractors, is they don't come in compliance with Indiana Energy Code. The building has to have an oil interceptor due to the amount of work that's going on. Those are things that get missed a lot of times because honestly, it's one thing, less than expecting, the committee, the building commissioner catches it. A lot of times, that oil gets dumped right into the public system, and no one catches it for five or 10 years until they, hey, where's the oil interceptor? There's a lot of items. Again, I don't know if they're including any of these items, or maybe they are. From industry standards, to build, you know, you're talking square footage cost of a building. I don't know what side you mentioned there.
70 by 300.
70 by 300? So, so they're doing 21,000 square feet for, at $25 a square foot is $525,000. You go to industry, there's a lot, tons of sites. We could, we subscribe to one, read construction data. They're, they give us industry standards of what is the going rate across the nation. And then they break it down to, you know, Centaur area, regional areas, and what is the going rate of building garages. And, you know, they're down, you know, I didn't do the exact math of what they're at. So their number is way out of line with what a garage will cost to construct in any manner that...
What'd you say, $340,000?
They gave a figure of, I got an email here, $17 to $20 per square foot.
$17 and 20 cents, yeah.
Seventeen to, 17 to 20.
Seventeen to 20.
So if you have $357,000 to $420,000. Again, as I stated earlier...
Overhead doors, they're missing a lot of them.
This is not including whatever you have in your plans, which I have not seen.
Yeah, can we, can we see the plans? I have not seen any. Can we see the plans? Where are they available?
Yeah, the commissioner has two sets of drawings at, at the highway garage that were left there for public viewing during the bidding process. Uh, two sets of plans and specifications. The building, to summarize it, it's pretty much, uh, no frills in the overall building. It's straightforward. Half of the building is unfinished. Half of the, the 70 by 300 is, um, under roof only, lighting, no heating in it. Half of the building is finished with the complete heating system and the appropriate ventilation systems for the working on the engines and motors. There's a small build-out office area. As he mentioned, there's a deduct of $85,000 if you don't do that, which is... thousand if you don't do that, which includes a residential style furnace and air conditioning unit, there's no high-end air handling equipment or anything in the building, it's all the design, very basic systems in the building, standard fluorescent lightings throughout the areas. There are two restrooms, no showers, we opted to take showers out, just to, again, trying to get the project on budgets, there is no employee shower area, there's just a locker room area only to keep costs down, and everything is done, trying to keep the cost as, as low as it can.
As bare bones as we can get it.
How many bay garage, working garage?
The bays are twenty-five feet on center, so.
How many, how many?
That's what you're getting for twenty-five fifties, say fine. What, six bays, finished, six bays unfinished?
Six finished and six unfinished.
So you got twelve bays? That setup, the width is seventy feet, again, so they can double stack the vehicles, the width was defined by the vehicle dimensions, they need to be able to pull in two per bay, times that gives you twenty, basically in, well, twenty-four bays. There's a, a sign room, all the associated power, again, there's a lot that goes into saying a shell of the building, I don't know, you know, are they bringing in a four hundred amp panel service for the power requirements, all the compressors and equipment that the garage has, there's a lot of things, I think you might go get someone to say, hey, I'll plug a shell up for twenty dollars a square foot, but that won't be the true cost of the entire project.
I know that.
Yeah.
That's why we need to, I think, talk to them, I think we need to revisit this.
Were they not interested in bidding? There was a public bid process, anyone was allowed to bid on the project, so chose, and tried to solicit it.
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call into the guy to figure out what, where the communication breakdown occurred.
Okay.
What is it with the plans?
Plans were, it was advertised, it was in, it was put on a public plan room, we went out and try, again, that's retaining the seven bids that we did for the county, we went out, our firm did out, went out and solicited three of the additional bidders, cause we wanted to make sure not just to come back with three bids or four bids, so you can get a really good spectrum of numbers, the more bids, the more chance of the county getting a very competitive number. And then for the, if you review the bid form, I think we've got some, between low bid and the next bid, there was a forty thousand dollar, low bid is seven fifty-two, the next bid was seven ninety, so there's a decent percentage here between the second bidder and the low bidder. I think Ronavon was very, it falls right in line where we thought, once the complete design is done, the numbers that we gave in preliminary design development, this has fallen right in line where we thought the project was gonna be. Just, any, the only other comment we'll add is, I know there's, we took a deduct to, to self-perform some of the in-office build-out, it'd be our recommendation not to accept that deduct unless you so choose, just you wanna have an educational experience for the kids, typically a professional contractor is gonna be more, have ability to meet the time schedule, get the project done, the quality of work, the oversight of watching a, a young group of young men working on a project like this can be challenging sometimes, we've done several projects where we have worked with them.
So how are we constructing the office area, what's the, what's the construction materials for the office area?
Uh, just metal studs and drywall, ten foot tall.
So what's the, there's gonna be a loft above there, correct?
No, there's no mezzanine designed in it.
Okay.
Again, to keep costs down, there's no mezzanine, one could be put in in the future, but under the base bid, there's no mezzanine designed to go in.
And how would one be put in in the future?
What's that?
How would one be put in in the future?
Insert columns into the structure and then slide your beam, with it on the, the length of the column, you could just slide in the beams and steel structure above it, so the.
Wouldn't wood framing be cheaper? Wood trusses?
Wood trusses.
Floor trusses?
Then steel, uh, it'd be tough, the wood, to do the wood, you gotta meet in a, in a, setting the code wide, you need a hundred and twenty-five pound, depending on what they're gonna store up there, a hundred and twenty-five pounds or more, square foot load capacity, to achieve that out of wood, it's gonna be close, a lot of times steel is quicker and easier to erect and get in place, you can look at wood structure for that framing, you get into wood framing, you get into what they call combustible concealed spaces, you gotta do the correct fire blocking and not have combustible concealed cavities, you get into steel framing, all those code requirements go away, sometimes that cost and labor offsets.
What's the, what's the offset though versus doing that? Spend a little time to do some blocking, have the bridging done, all that stuff done ahead of time, rather than going back putting steel columns in for something later on? Don't you think the cost is gonna be more in the future? To do the steel framing?
Yes, to add a mezzanine, definitely would be more, again, we left it out, cause we're so close to over and over the amount that we wanted to design and build the building to, we said we're not gonna design a mezzanine in the structure at this time, we didn't even entertain that as a design option to keep costs down. Mezzanines can run another, you know, if you spend another twenty, I have to look it up, I don't have those numbers off my head, just ballparking, if you get twenty dollars a square foot, thirty dollars, you know, somewhere in there for mezzanine superstructure times, I think that area might be a couple thousand, three thousand square feet, all of a sudden you got another forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars onto the bid, that's not in there today, is what I would initially get, I'd have to verify those numbers, I'm just ballparking, then you'd have another fifty thousand to do the mezzanine today versus tomorrow, it's gonna be a little more, you're gonna have some interference that you're gonna have to work around.
My question to you is, if you did it steel framing, you gotta add steel columns in at a later date, what do you project that expense would be to the county?
That, I'm, again, from just our throw numbers, I'm saying fifty thousand dollars today.
For steel frame and construction?
Yeah, probably, for steel and/or wood, I mean, again, these are really rough numbers.
For wood frame, you don't have to put columns in, it's already there, wood is structural, that'll hold, it would hold wood trusses, wood floor trusses, it'll be, it would structurally sound.
If you do, if you do wood, if you took the existing walls today and you go wood, then you'd have to do a series of strip footers to transfer the gravity loads of the mezzanine into the foundation. Columns, you can do an isolated path and do that after the fact, so after the fact, wood structure would be very difficult, cause you won't have the foundation in place. If you wanna do wood mezzanine and bear it on wood stud walls, you'd need to do thickened footers along all these future walls that you're gonna put in. After the fact, it's easier to put in some structural steel columns in isolated areas and put in a pad every twenty feet, which is a lot less invasive than, or you gotta spend today, you have to spend all the money for all the foundation when you pour the slab.
I've been in construction most of my life, and you, and floor trusses will span a great distance.
Yeah, you can get monoliths.
Okay, so you can run, you can run a bearing wall down the middle of the thing and call it good.
Yeah, we've banned monoliths at twenty-five feet.
Be done with it right now, put the footer in right away, ahead of time, be done with it, rather than come back at a later date and do it, so this is, this is kinda my, my problem with this process, is you, you are the ones that are in charge of the, the garage, I understand that, I respect that, we have a fiscal responsibility here, I'm not sure those fiscal responsibilities, those needs have been met to my, to my satisfaction. So I'd like to look at the plans, like to see what we've omitted, what we've included, that we can get that price down, I mean, I've been in Mark's bid, construction, I've been in construction, I'm not asking to overtake the thing, but I, I question where, when I got prices here, keep in mind, these are not including your doors and everything else, it's not including everything you talk about, which has to be included, I understand that, and so that number could double or triple, I understand that.
Yes.
But I think that we need to put all of our minds together to come up with a solution here, before we start asking for more money.
Yeah, any design changes, again, I was working with BART, the county, we designed the drawings for their parameters, the guidance that they gave us to design the drawings too, we went them out and got competitive bids, uh, one thing, or maybe, I assume you know, this is one thing I pride myself, to help give you a little confidence in our bidding process, we pride ourselves trying to get the most cost-effective building, our fee is a fixed fee, we're not paid on a percentage, there's no advantageous reason for this project to go up in value, I do not get one dollar more, rather this job comes in at four hundred thousand or comes in a million. We gave you a fixed design fee for the scope of work defined for us to design, so there's no advantageous reason for us to inflate the materials or basic materials, um, it's a mid-range hardware setting, we didn't go high-end on the hardware, you know, Schleg type style hardware, but it's in their, what we call B-class, it's not all A-class hardware that we use. Toilet, you can, you can see the drawings, it's all on there, owners providing their own restroom accessory fixtures, drawings are very detailed and complete, down to the owners providing their own toilet, paper towel dispensers, to, you know, that way they stay with the systems they have today, contractors simply install them, all the associated grab bars, hardware for ADA compliance. I think everything, again, the drawings, you know, they're set up, they can be emailed electronically, the drawings are available in PDF format, they're available in any format you so choose, but again, the.
Can you PDF them to me?
Big part.
Can you PDF them to me?
Yeah, yeah. Again, I've sent everything to.
DWG format?
What's that?
You have DWG format?
DWG? They're in PDF available, we can make the DWGs available if you so choose, but they're,
I'd like to look at both.
Typically, we don't share the DWG files, you know, proprietary and engineering, typically don't share the DWGs.
Doesn't the file become that of the owner's though?
What's that?
Doesn't the file become the, the county's?
The drawings typically do by AI, American Institute of Architects, but not the proprietary software and the CAD files, but.
It's not proprietary software, I mean, I've worked with plenty of architectural firms, we have to furnish the file.
We can strip out the, you know, basically our symbols and stuff that is proprietary to the company, just explode all the symbols and you download the file down to a standard lines only, typically a PDF is a layered document as well. We have no problem sharing the drawing, DWG, if that's what the owner wants, we've done that before, but typically the PDF is sufficient, but if you have a particular reason, one of the, the drawing file will be sent out, I don't have a price, not really available at the moment, I don't have it stripped down, it's got, right now, the DWGs have got our electronic engineering seals and all that information that we'd wanna strip out of the electronic format, so that we just have to, again, you know, get the file stripped down.
It's not the big process, no.
As a point of comparison, Debbie and Frank have been, and I think maybe Mark had something to do with the proposed garage or with the senior center, and you might tell them what that cost come in for, what you're just gonna get.
Well, at the last meeting, there were bids, we had bid that out to, to put a garage in over there, and as soon as the bids were in, I looked at, uh, I was sitting next to Frank, who was also on the senior center board, and I looked at him and I said, we're not gonna bring that garage in at six hundred thousand, you know, it was like, what was it, Frank, six, what, six ninety?
Two bids, two bids, one was five eighteen, everyone was like, five ninety-one, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was over six, yeah.
I don't remember the dimensions.
Did you?
One was five something, the other one was a little over six, but I can't.
Yeah, I thought one was like five ninety-three, and I don't know.
And how big was your garage, Mark?
Hundred and forty by seventy-two, I think, one forty by seventy-two. And like Dave said, we, we had to put, we had to put special exhaust fans in there to, to, to get the feathers out, that you, you have to do that, and.
Yep, you just have to, it's not an option.
Yeah, and that's, that's very hard.
So your building, comparing it to yours, we're setting at thirty-six dollars a square foot, turnkey, complete, finished project here, which is a very competitive, you go to any construction, industry standards, to get a garage facility at thirty-six dollars a square foot, now that's turn, that's turnkey, completed everything, completely all items, that's door, hardware, everything is surprise, the owner just sits back and he walks into his building, it's ready to go, that's a pretty darn competitive number in today's market, to attain a complete garage for thirty-six dollars a square foot.
And what, what was this garage, what that fifty?
I think it was fifty-two, and I think it's fifty-two a square foot, but I, we were finished off, I think, a little bit inside a bit more than what yours was.
The way we got down to thirty-six is, Barton directed us, Dave, I want mid-grade, keep, we gotta keep this project down, so there's some things where doors, rather you go seven ply or five ply, we went down to five ply on wood doors, to keep the cost down on the wood doors within the office space, it's a little less quality, but this is not a building, these doors aren't gonna get swung open fifty-five times a day, so it's something I was comfortable doing, and same with the hardware, this hardware is not gonna be used two hundred times a day, so there's a lot of stuff, and that's how we got it down to this thirty-six dollars a square foot, is maintaining the finishes, what I would call mid-grade finish, still quality building, so you aren't gonna have maintenance issues after your one-year warranty period's up.
Mr. Indistruck?
Yes?
I, I've got a question, just from my own curiosity, that maybe you can.
Okay.
Help me with. We're, we want to replace a building that's over thirty years old, maybe thirty-five, I can't remember exactly. Now, during the past thirty-five years, the building codes have changed, we've picked up a lot of state and federal regulations that we didn't have thirty or thirty-five years ago.
That's correct.
That you, that you have, that has to be incorporated in this new construction, because of regulations and rules that we have today that we didn't have thirty years ago. Do you have a feel for a, a dollar amount that these extra regulations is, is costing on this project?
We don't keep any records like that, because it's too hard, the regulations are changing, we stay current on what current market values are, so I never, our firm, nor any firm I know of tries to say, boy, that's what, look how much the government's costing us, because of now a bathroom has to be seven foot six, cause I gotta have a five-foot turning radius plus a thirty by forty-eight square that doesn't interfere with the door, there's all these rules, so you start adding it, but there is no way to definitively say, is it adding five percent or ten percent, there's just no number out there to derive, I wish there was, like, just, there's no way to do that.
Yeah, well, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot.
That's okay, I'll tell you the truth.
It's, piques my curiosity to try to understand how much money it, it really costs local governments, that, to have the, the federal and the state.
There is cost.
Regulating and, and mandating so much of what we do.
I can tell you some of the big items that required is, your makeup area has to be preheated now, you know, when you pull in ventilation, you, a lot of contractors, what they try to do, and they get in line with, I see, I don't know how many garages I've been in, it's like, there's no way this meets code, but the building commissioner approves it, they get through the state, that's not my problem, just because someone does something wrong for ten years doesn't make it meet code, it just means they gotta wait with it for ten years, so you gotta have a pre, you know, a reheat unit on your makeup air, those cost, you got ten, ten, fifteen grand in that, but you have to have it, we gotta show in the drawings, there's no way we can submit drawings in good faith to the state without that equipment being on the drawings, even though some of your competitors, if you were in the private sector, would try to eliminate that, maybe say, hey, I'll take care of that by owner, and then never install it, cause they don't wanna spend fifteen thousand on it, but these drawings are designed to meet all aspects of Indiana Building Code, that's what you hired us to do, and that's what you have, but you, we've done so in a very cautious method of keeping the cost down and not, cause again, Barton said, Dave, no, I want to pop into everything, this could have been a fifty dollars a square foot project real quickly, with not changing any square footage, but just upgrading the finishes and going with parabolic lights instead of prismatic lenses, changing the hardware, there's a lot of stuff that we've kept way in that mid-level finish to get you a very cost-effective facility.
Yeah, I, I have no reason to doubt your word about that at all. Have you ever? Have you ever known it to happen that an older building have to be retrofitted to meet your.
In the state of Indiana, an existing building currently by our G A, our General Administrative Rules of Indiana is grandfathered in, that building is not required, it can maintain its current use, legal use, legal use, rather, you got a two-hundred-year-old sanctuary church, that would have to be sprinkled under any code today, they'd never have to sprinkle that building as long as it maintains its use as its current use. The only thing that you are required to do, is you are required to keep the building in good sound condition, that's structural and everything else, if a building starts to fail in structural safety or any other element, then you are required, the, the building commissioner, or the state building commissioner, whoever's involved at that level, can force you to vacate a building or repair a building into safe, occupiable status, so that is a charge of the building commissioner and/or any design professional, you know, our license and board of ethics say, if we see a situation that's unsafe and dangerous, we are required by law to report that to building commissioners and/or state level, so that's the only thing you have to change, you gotta keep the building in good safe, where your sprinkler system stops working, you gotta get it working again, you can't just say, oh, well, it broke, so you gotta keep maintained, but you do not have to bring it up to current code.
That, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
No problem. No problem.
So we're, we're one of two, we're one of two places. I understand you can't approve a day's appropriation tonight. But if you decide that you're definitely not going to do that, then we need to know. The commissioners have gone down the road and do whatever, do whatever we can with what we have appropriated.
I personally will not appropriate any more money. I want to see the drawings, see what we gotta do to cut back that building, to get down to where we can afford it. So I want to see the drawings. And also, I think the highway can somehow, if they can finagle their budget, work their budget around to come up with some additional money they can. I know at the, I talked to the supervisor up at forty and one at the state highway garage. He wanted, in behind the fence, everything was supposed to be gravelly, gravelled lot completely. He wanted to pay or cement or whichever. He went back to state and asked that be done. State said absolutely not. We spent way too much money on this building. We're not going to spend anymore. So he and his own budget took and moved money around and he got it all paid. And then that, and that's, I'm saying that's.
That, that is fine. If Debbie can find a way that we can find money out of the highway.
Yeah.
Budget to put into this, that, that is fine. I don't wish you can't enough.
I will remind council, you cut that out of Jay's budget when he put that in and presented it to you last year.
There.
I mean, I'm just saying.
There is no asphalt paving, just as I have to that. There is no paving on this project at all.
There's no. No, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying.
I just wanted to make sure you know, there's been enough of any asphalt paving. It's all stuff.
Additional money to do the building. Was there, were these specifications approved by the state yet?
The projects are submitted. The state has sent out an RFI. The only RFI outstanding is I need to submit to the state the pre-engineering steel buildings, manufacturers numbers. So the plans are approved in every aspect except that.
If they changed them all, they'd have to, you'd have to resubmit them.
Yes, I have to follow an addendum process to the state.
Even if it was ten feet and there's, can you, how many different things and agencies have to approve a public building of this size?
Just the Indiana State Department, you got Homeland Security. You gotta send it to Homeland Security and then it goes to your local zoning and building commissioner for their, your local approval process. So that has not happened. The contractor that's doing the work has to apply for the building permit from your local building commissioner zoning. But we have submitted to the state of Indiana for state approval.
I, I mean, I can go back and figure, but what was the fee for submitting it to the state?
What was the fee?
Yeah.
Uh, I think it was, was it, you're going to quote me on this, like?
Yeah.
Six hundred and twenty-five dollars or something like that. It wasn't in the overall budget. It's a reimbursable that I'll send to Barton, but it's, again, we send it, it's submitted in. An addendum is, it's like seventy-five dollars a sheet or something like that. You're not talking, maybe if you had to resubmit the entire project, we could in theory cancel out project day, resubmit the entire project. As far as state filing fees, you're out six hundred, maybe six hundred dollars if you change the scope.
But what about, not to put you on the spot, I mean.
Other fee would be reengineering fees. If you ask us to go back and redesign the entire, you know, I don't know the scope you're going to ask me to redesign. But anything you ask me to, our firm to redesign, we have in good faith designed the building as directed and have completed engineering to this stage. So if you go back and say, Dave, we want you to cut the building down to forty feet or we want you to take out either be costs associated with redesign.
But remember, if you do that, the, the three-hundred-foot building is what it takes to put our equipment in. If you cut that building down, then our equipment is again sitting outside.
I'm aware of that.
You know?
Can I say something? Because I gotta run. I'm just gonna give you my position on this and then I gotta leave. Number one, the one forty-four for the highway garage supervisor, no one's going to take that job for twenty-six thousand. No one who's qualified. So something has to change there. So I'm agreeing with that. The other thing is, is we've been doing this a long time, this highway garage, and I really don't care as a county commissioner what we've come up with. But our liability insurance is so bad that we're fighting just to keep our head above water. So we don't pay out the yin yang for insurance and this and that and everything else. And we have a building that's potentially going to fall down. And the insurance company, most of the insurance companies have told us, and Chris could probably attest to this, that anytime a building, anytime the county commissioners or any government entity knows that a building is unsafe for any given reason whatsoever, and the building falls down and hurts anyone, nothing is covered. So if you don't, if we don't have the money to do anything, we're going to have to come up with it eventually. So thanks for your time.
Zane, you got six hundred thousand.
Right.
Do something.
Okay.
Right. It's just, it's just a matter of how, how much you want to do. But like, but like to say, if you cut, if you, plus if you cut the building down, again, our equipment is sitting outside. You've got a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar piece truck. You've got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grader. Mr. Flum, I don't think you, I don't think you leave your farm equipment out in the winter. So that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to protect the counties at this.
The only other thing I'll add is Barton, and Mike, as you know, you're involved in construction, and I tell owners this all the time. If you want to cut costs, this is a very basic building. The only way to cut costs, in my professional opinion, is you're going to have to cut the square footage of the building. The, your, the building is what it is. You're going to cut pennies. You can go in and tweak this and say five thousand here, maybe ten. But if you're saying, I'm hearing the number six hundred thousand, if that's the number, we're giving an example, by deleting the entire office of this building, we did that as a deduct. That is all associated plumbing, electrical, light fixtures, absolutely everything is only, is eighty-five thousand, for an example. That, that's an extreme delete, but if you said, hey, you can't even occupy the building with that, some of those components in there as a requirement to have restrooms per Indiana code. So even though it's a deduct out of the contractor's contract, there's not an option of not putting those in the building and occupying the building. They have to be there in theory before the building commissioner should grant you a certificate of occupancy. But that's just given a scale of reference. If by deleting that entire office, we, that's every single door, hinge, everything is eighty-five thousand dollar deduct.
And that's coming off of a seven fifty-two, four hundred.
Yes.
That gets us down to six sixty-seven, four hundred, which you still are going to have to.
You're going to have to pay for some of that. You're going to have to buy materials and you're sure, someone's going to still have to buy the H P C.
What I'm saying is, I'm not saying, okay, some like fellow councilmen are saying, you know, reduce the size of the building. I'm saying with that deduct, you're close to the six hundred thousand with taking up that eighty-five grand. I know you still gotta get light fixtures. You still gotta come up with money for that. I'm saying there's some things that we could look at, we could modify to get us under the, just under that six hundred thousand dollar mark. Without reducing square footage, without reducing this, without reducing that.
I'm welcome. I'd be challenged. To give an example.
That's what I've asked for.
Yeah?
That's it.
Oh, yeah, I have no, again, I assume maybe you've already seen, had the drawings. Again, the drawings are public information. We've submitted.
Well, I, I want to see the drawings. How big roughly is the office area square foot?
Approximately one base of twenty-five by seventy.
Okay.
And there's, to keep costs down, there's no flooring. The Barton said, we're not going to stick any carpet in there. They'd get destroyed. So it's just concrete floor sealed. We didn't put any flooring. A lot of times you'd want to dress up and have some ceramic tile and, nope, the walls are just dry. I mean, everything's bare bone.
Well, that's the way it should be. You, you guys come in with dirty shoes and you don't, you don't want anything.
And that's how we got down to the thirty-five point something a square foot is, because it is really, I, there's just not, I wish there was, I wish there was an easy thing to say, hey, you can cut this out of it and save fifty thousand dollars. There's just not a lot to, other than, again, the numbers, do you even come close to the six hundred thousand range? I think you're, we ran some rough numbers to prepare you. If you were to delete the entire hundred and fifty, building three hundred, the hundred and fifty square feet that does not have heating or floor in it, the rough numbers in deleting that entire section of floor is around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand a square feet. Real close to your shell number, square footage was, that's seventeen to twenty dollars a square foot is the same number we come up for shell space. That's no doors, because that space has no doors on it. So your numbers are really close. I agree with you. For shell space, you're right on. And that's what you would just save. And you take ten thousand square feet, which is half the building, ten thousand five hundred, times fifteen dollars a square foot. You're saving about a hundred and fifty thousand, but we chopped the building in half. Those are the, in my opinion, professional opinion, that's the changes you would have to decide. And that's not mine to decide, that's yours. But those are the type of changes that would have to be made to the structure to get you in that six hundred thousand range. There's just no other way to get in that range. I wish there was, but that, that's the cost of construction today's market.
New specs were done, we'd have to publish it, get more bids.
Yeah, the, all you, you know, your bidding procedure, basically to rebid the project, I think you're only allowed a certain amount of dollars by change order. Is it ten percent or something by state law? So you could only change order, I think, ten or twenty percent, depends if it's foreseen or unforeseen. So basically, if you want to change the structure in that quantity, you know, that, you know, amount, I believe state law is going to require you to reject all bids and put it back out for a rebid and make any modifications in the drawings that you so choose. And then go through a whole re-advertising process, a rebidding process. And then that would be the, the order that would have to go. The bids are good by our specification. The bids are good for sixty days. So you have sixty days to consider the bids. If the, if the bids are awarded by the end of July, the contractor is guaranteed in their bid to be done by December thirty-first. If you take out the sixty days, they may not be done until January thirty. Depending on, obviously, getting into winter condition, weather there, it gets tricky. Steel, right now, our manufacturers are telling us metal buildings out about eight weeks for delivery. So the idea is if the project goes forward as is, you sign contracts here toward the end of July, contractors start foundation work, they get the foundations in eight weeks later. August, September twentieth, you got a metal building coming on site, September, October, five, six weeks, they put the building up, you're under roof before the bad weather hits. They finish the inside out through November, December, and you take ownership December thirty-first.
But if, if we rebid that whole project plus back at least six weeks minimum.
Yeah, yeah. Reading procedures require it's about thirty days for the bidding process, plus we'd have to have time to redo the design. So that depend on what you ask us to do, that just stay a placeholder in there, three weeks, four weeks for us to do whatever you ask us to do on the redesign. So really, it's going to be closer to eight to ten weeks. And then your building, your danger there is you're going to ask the contractor to erect a steel building right through winter. And that's, depends on what winter we get. When we get winter like we had last year, the most known record in a hundred and fifty years, it's going to be real tough to put a building up in those conditions. We get a winter like we had a few, that's a challenge, you know, building. This is the ideal time to start. It is what it is. Again, I'm just giving you the facts and you have to make the hard decisions. Not my decision to make, but these are the facts of timelines and construction and Indiana weather.
Well, commissioners, when, when we appropriated six hundred thousand dollars for the building, we, no one really had any idea of what the final bids would come in at. So it, it is unfortunate that this bid, our little bid has come in a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars more than we originally appropriated. But at the same time, our cumulative building fund does replenish itself at, if someone want to refresh my memory. Forty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Tim cap.
Cum cap.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was thinking, I was thinking of another thing. Okay, so, you know, it, it's not outside the realm of possibility for us to heal up rather quickly over this. I'm not, I'm not ready to dismiss this project at all because of this. And I, I was expecting a, an overrun from what we've appropriated. And now that we know what it is, I, I'd like to see all parties involved satisfied that they've done all they can do. And if anyone wants, needs to look at blueprints or other alternatives, whatever, I want them to have the opportunity to do that. But I, I'm, I'm mindful that our income to the, to this cum fund is, doesn't stop. It keeps coming. So if, if we have to take a little bit longer to pay for the project, I would rather finally get the project done than wait until it's going to cost us even more.
You may.
And another thing to consider, we've already spent considerable money on this project, and if you abandon it and start in again, you start right over, over again with those expenses.
I, I very well understand that. I don't want to throw good money after bad.
One thing I'll do, you may know, Mark, I think you do know, Miller, Don Miller, engineering was our M E P engineer for the project.
Was he?
So he did, familiar, feel free, if you wish to contact him, honor my feelings, I know you.
No, no.
Know a feeling.
He's the one that did the work on the.
I know.
The garage.
And he told me he did. I thought it was kind of coincidental when I found that out because we were in a project meeting, he's like, well, I'm doing one with.
Yeah.
So I, I said, well, okay, well, you probably know my client on this one too then. So Don is the M E P engineer that did the mechanical systems to meet the code. He's a very knowledgeable mechanical engineer.
Yeah. Now, I, Dave, I, I don't have a problem with what you've done. What I've heard, it sounds, you're very.
Yeah.
You're very realistic. It's just that.
Our initial preliminary budget was seven hundred thousand. Once we got through preliminary design phase with the project and we got the scope of the project more defined. Once we were hired and brought on board, we generated that we felt the project was going to be around seven hundred thousand. The other, the only other items to throw out there, this is in this project specs, as you go through, you'll see a thirty thousand dollar general contingency allowance that's in the bid. So in this contractor's bid of seven fifty-two, thirty thousand dollars of that money is yours to spend for unforeseen conditions. The biggest unforeseen condition we see is potential soil issues due to the soil warrants that we had. We bid as a material cost, line item cost. The contractor gave us a cost to extend foundations in intervals of one foot. So if you look at the cost to protect you from a, you know, a unfair change order, there is a already pre-bid amount from all the contractors to extend the foundations down. That way during construction, if we have to extend ten footers, three more feet, the numbers you'll see on the bid forms, I think it's like three, three hundred dollars a foot. So, you know, if you gotta go down ten feet, that's another three thousand dollars in foundations, and that's a pre-bid item from all the contractors. And that's what that thirty thousand dollars is mainly for, is to protect, is to get a total turnkey so you don't have to come back and have an un sizable change order due to some unforeseen condition.
How much has been spent since the decision was made not to buy a building and go ahead and erect it? I don't know if Debbie hit that figure or not.
I wrote that down.
Is that out of the six?
Probably.
Is that out of the six hundred thousand that was appropriated or is that?
We've already spent some for design engineering work and, and then we paid eleven hundred dollars for the, for the easement so we can run sewer line back and hook into city sewer and not have to. That was eleven hundred.
You had two core drills, right, as of right now?
Correct. Painters core drill, potentially different size. The, the size of total, two original, and then they record the site that we're building on today.
Okay.
This is the best site, but it's not good either, which is the reason for, I don't know, contingency in there for the, for the validation.
We did put a, again, you'll see the draw, we did put a three-step, three-foot step in the building to minimize site infrastructure cost. So the building's not all one grade level. The half the building's at one hundred, the other half the building's at one oh three to, again, eliminate, again, we did every effort we could to keep.
Okay.
Costs down the project.
Okay.
Well, yes, and is that, if the, if the council's dead set on six hundred thousand dollars, not a penny more, you know, there's a fund that's meant for, for buildings. The whole process, I mean, if you want to still have a new building, you're going to have to rebid it, republish it. That's going to take a long time. This idea has been in front of me since I've been for about a year. I just, I don't know, I just want to make sure everyone realizes it's still a huge liability. I mean, if you haven't seen the commissioners meetings last week with the problems with just insuring the county, it's. I just don't know. I, I mean, are you guys wanting to, is that, you know, dead set, six hundred thousand? I mean, on a project like this, or I would think that you would anticipate there might be.
I think some of us, some of us are dead set that that's what it is, and some of us are.
Yeah.
I'm not dead set that six hundred is, is the final number, but I'm not dead set that we've answered all of the questions. That's all. I'm just saying is, I'm not saying it's set up for rebid. I'm just saying let's, you know, I wouldn't mind looking at it because I've, I've been in there and I've been in construction. I understand the process. I understand about looking for things for the future, planning for the future. And, and I, from what I've gathered with Dale, you know, we didn't know the numbers when, when they first came to us. We had no idea what they would be. Six hundred thousand was the number that was picked out of the air and hopefully it could fit in there. And I think some of us were thinking it would. it would, some knew it wouldn't. I don't think you're going to get an answer tonight, Chris.
No, that's fine, I mean, they're open for two months, I just wanted to, I guess, let everyone know that decisions are made, money's already been spent into this, just consider that when you're thinking about this hard $600,000 figure. Just, I guess, you know, think about the whole process. And that's all, I mean, this isn't my decision, it's just to chime in.
It boils down to, we've got 60 days left of this contract, we're going to do it. If you and Mark want to look at them plans, do you have suggestions, we can cut that down?
I'd like to sit down with you and Dave. I'd like to sit down with you and Dave.
That's fine.
That's all I've asked.
That's fine.
That's it.
Yeah, I would love to sit down and go over, I have no problem with that.
And if, you know, if we can figure out how we can do this cheaper.
You may ask your questions, and we've already looked at that mic, and there's nothing we can do, or Mike, we haven't, we never thought about that.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, I don't know.
That's fine. The only thing I'm saying, if we're going to do that, I'd like to do it soon and not drag it out and get this, do whatever we're going to do.
Do you want to set a meeting date? I don't know if you know your schedule today, I mean, I'd be happy to set one now while I'm here.
If you're going to be here till the meeting, then we can discuss it afterwards. If you'll be here till after the meeting, if not...
Yeah, I'll wait until the meeting's over, so we can set a time date that works for us. I think that would be the most productive, if I could be in the room with you, me and Mark, and then we can slam through the drawings, and I could help, instead of you having to read through my drawings, I could take you to the hotspots, and it might go a little bit quicker and easier for everyone, in the nature of the project.
Because I'm with Dale, I think that, you know, $600 was a benchmark.
Right.
Wasn't, to my mind, it wasn't the number.
We are where we are.
Your bays are 25 feet, right?
Yeah, 25 by 7, yeah, 25 foot pre-engineered steel bays.
Jay, how many bays do you have associated for repairs of trucks right now? I mean, is there two, three, four?
No, when that garage was built.
Yes.
It was one bay.
One bay?
Because it's all single acts of trucks.
Okay.
Right now, you can get a tandem in there, and you can squeeze a small truck in alongside of it, if you've got something long, like a grinder setting in there, you can't get nothing else in.
So you just got one bay right now, which you have, okay.
That's why it pushes the heart for a bigger garage, so if you have something you have to work on, and go over there for a while, you can still get other stuff in to do something with it.
No, I understand, okay. 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 Okay, that's it?
Yep. The thing, the issue that we probably really need to resolve, then, is not the budget for the highway garage tonight. We've got a little bit of time.
What we need to resolve to...
Is the highway director.
Tonight, if you want to meet with me and Dale, we can set that time right now if you want to.
Okay.
And do that soon, get that out of the way, and then go on down.
Probably, it'll be next week.
Huh?
It'll be next week, because my schedule opens up.
That's fine, just let me know when it is.
Probably Monday?
That is fine, we have a special meeting at...
10:00.
At 10:00, if you want to do it.
I'm off that whole day.
Well, you want to set one, you want to set one to talk Monday?
That's fine.
One to talk Monday?
One to talk Monday. You want to meet here? That's fine.
Where would be greater access to your files?
What's that?
Wherever you have greater access to your files. If you're just going to bring, if we're going to bring hard copies?
Yeah, you're going to bring, again, I bring, they got two sets of drawings.
That's fine, that's fine.
And then I can bring, again, I'll email, unless you want to give me your email, you can email Mark, Mark emailed to Mike. You have each other's email.
You got my email.
Yeah.
Do you want to be in the meeting Monday?
Can you send the PDFs to Mike?
Yeah, I can get, yeah, I can get them.
Okay, you'll get those in the morning, you'll give them to Mike, you'll have PDFs to review between now and Monday on your own, and then Monday, I'll make the most productive meeting. Any questions you got, Monday at 1 o'clock, be here, bring a hard set of drawings with us, so you can have the hard set, so we can make any marks on the hard set, if you want to make any notes on your PDF set, or whatever you want to bring to the meeting.
That'd be fine.
Again.
Okay, well, I think the real pressing issue is what to do with the highway director, your pay.
Well, it is, it's...
Correct me if I'm wrong or misunderstanding, but you need to know what we're going to do, so you know what direction to take here the next few weeks before August 8th.
Right, and we don't have any options of hiring somebody, we just, nobody's interested, but yes, we need to know what you're going to do.
I mean, I would agree, I can't see why anybody would take a director position at $26,000, be paid less than your subordinates, and have all the responsibility and the heartache that comes along with it. So...
You know, if you want to get up to $45,000, like I put this in, that's about what it would take for Jay to stay and not retire. And not lose. Because if he doesn't retire now, then when he does, he's going to continue to lose $150 a month, or the longer he goes, more than that, right?
God, I figured it out. And I lose about $150 a month, and it multiplies every year, if you want to make a proper percentage, it multiplies. Because you have another $150 on top, which you already lost the year before.
I don't want to make this meeting any longer than it has to be, but sooner or later, I'd like to know what those people that are running perf are trying to do, because they're...
They're trying to make the money you put in last month, is what they're trying to do.
I think all the baby boomers are hitting retirement age, would be my guess.
It sounds like they're reliving on their obligations.
One of the individuals that we interviewed for this job looked for him, and he said they're leaving their busloads on account of their per, that they have to retire, lose a bunch, lose a portion of their money.
You lose more each year, don't you, Jay? I mean, it's an initial, and then you...
In October, you lose a percent, the next year in October, you lose another percent, and the year after next, you lose another percent, and on that fourth year, you drop down to whatever the prime rate is, is what you draw, which is about 2%. So you're actually, you lose about 5% total, before it's all over and done.
If we, if we give the surveyor the 20 grand, and make it like he's an engineer, he can pick up that extra 20 grand, what would the highway department use him for? Would that save us some money on a director by using this, the surveyor?
The surveyor, as you know, the surveyor really does the engineering work on the big cans, the culverts, and all that now.
And we've used Jerry Goldman down quite a bit, you know, down at the highway department, and fast.
Commissioner Barker, with all due respect, I'm going to table this for a second, and Judge Butch has been here patiently, I want to just jump to her, get her taken care of so she can go home, and then we'll come back up and readdress this about the highway director, because I feel that this highway director's going to go on for a little bit.
Hope not.
I want to be respectful of the judge and her time. Judge?
Yes. I've learned a lot more about building construction than I ever thought I would know.
You want to go to the garage?
Might come in handy someday.
Maybe, I hope not. I'm here because it's going to be necessary for the court to have additional monies to conduct jury trials, which is one of the main points of business of the court. When we submitted our budget last year, I believe that I requested $12,000, and that was cut to $6,000. I now have remaining for jury trials, $1,298.04. And just so you know, what that is used for is, by law, jurors are paid a per diem just to show up, they are paid $15 when they're summoned into court to show up for jury duty, if they are selected, they're paid $40. They are also paid 44 cents per mile, and that's by law. And so, to conduct a jury trial, we have to make those payments, and some jury trials are one day, some jury trials are two days, every now and then you'll get a three-day trial, not too often. And I have jury trials scheduled through the end of the year, firm trial dates. One of the trials that's scheduled, the one that's set for August 4th, is an early trial date. What that means is, the court has to have that case brought to trial by that date, or the defendant is released and discharged. So that trial, I can assure you, unless the case is dismissed, or there's a plea agreement reached, and I don't have any indication that that's going to happen, that case will go to trial to do my job, and, you know, be diligent in my job, that has to be done, I have. So what I wanted to tell you is, just to give you an idea of what I'm looking at, I have in August that case, which will go to trial, it's an A felony, which requires a larger number of jurors, and just to be on the safe side, I always summons in more jurors for an early trial date, because that's a case where you have to make sure the case goes to trial on that day. So I'll be summoning in a larger number of jurors, probably 80, just to make sure that if some juror has some reason that they're disqualified, or they know a witness, or something that isn't foreseen, or a few people don't show up, I know that I still have enough people there to get that trial done. Then I also have in August, one civil trial, that requires less jurors, you only need six jurors and one alternate, that's usually a one-day trial. But I figured out, with meals, the typical major felony trial is going to run between $1,300 and $1,800 for that expense, based upon past trials we've had, and whether it's a one-day or a two-day. A civil trial is more like $800 to $1,000 per trial. So the food might vary a little bit. You might only serve them one meal versus two, but at any rate, so I have just the early trial, that's an A felony, because it's under the old law, set for August 4th. I have one civil trial in August, I know that's going to go, the cases have already been to mediation before I give them a trial date, that has to go. In September, I have a case that I know is going to go to trial, it's not going to get resolved through a plea agreement or anything like that, that's an A felony case as well, so that's, you're talking about higher range. In October, I have four cases set, if they don't get resolved, one of those cases is going to go. In November and December, likewise, I'm setting them four cases deep. My goal is to have one jury trial per month of criminal cases, just so we can keep the dock in under control, because if I don't make people get these cases resolved, they're not going to resolve them, and they need to be resolved. So maybe all of the cases in October and November and December will all get resolved, but you're talking about 12 major felony cases, I don't know that I will. So I would say, knowing that I have the two trials in August, knowing that I'm going to have the trial in September, and I have another civil trial stuck in there too, I have a civil trial in October, I would say, conservatively, I need $7,000 more for jury trials through the end of the year, I have almost $1,300 in there. But it could be as much as maybe $10,600 more, if I do have a felony trial in October, November, and December. And that's what it takes to keep the cases moving and get the cases resolved, because you can't let these people just sit in the county jail forever, they need to have their case resolved, and be sent to the Department of Corrections, or get acquitted, or whatever's going to happen, every now and then the state dismisses them. So I need at least $7,000, but maybe about $11,000. And I have the trials set, and I'm going to have the trials, so I just want you to be aware of that.
Any questions for the judge? Now, do you want to take a motion to approve the additional, or disapprove it?
How much are you asking for, Ben?
I have $6,000 in now, which would get me to my bare bones estimate, and I might have to come back and get $3,000 more, just depends on whether the people plead guilty or what happens.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
You have a motion on the floor to accept it, I'm assuming? Jim, to approve? Is your motion to approve?
Yes.
$6,000.
Or $6,000 additional?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Any questions?
I've got one. Judge, I don't have a copy of your request.
I brought it with me here, please.
I wanted to know if this fund, this additional...
County general.
Pardon?
It's a county general.
A county general, okay. I guess all I can ask is, please don't spend it all.
Well, I don't have any control over when someone asks for an early trial, or when they commit a crime, or whether it takes two or three days to put on a case. I try to run, if you've ever seen a jury trial, I try to run it as efficiently as I can, I try to make everybody show up on time, but I can't control the whole universe, so I'll do the best I can.
Okay.
I thought you were a judge, I thought you controlled everything.
Thank you for that. Does anybody else have any questions?
Okay, we've got, any other questions? We got a motion that's been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Aye, say aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks.
Thank you for your, being patient with us.
That's my all right.
Okay. Commissioner Parker, did you apologize, I just didn't want to keep you here all night. Okay, where were we?
We were getting ready to, highway supervisor, we were getting ready to approve, I think, 45-9, 645, we were getting ready to approve 45-9 as a salary for the highway supervisor, and keep Jay free, on the supervisor, and not retire.
We have the funds in the highway department to do that?
Yeah, I think they, actually, I think they're running ahead, is Jay still over there?
Yeah, we're running ahead right now.
I think you're running ahead of your estimated revenue for the year. I think you've got, what was it I had on the bottom sheet, like over half a million in highway?
We've got like a million in local road street.
Just a minute, I'll get to the right paper.
Well, it's on, it's on what I gave everybody, it should be right here.
Yeah, the highway, 666,000, 430,000. And local road street, 1,600,000.
Yeah, 675, 686, 60, is what this was.
I don't, what else, I don't have that.
I don't seem to have it.
For what?
Whatever that, you was just, they were just talking about.
The figures of what money you have, no, it's just...
This financial report by fund is right here.
Okay.
It's on the first page, there's highway department.
Okay.
And then there's also, local road street is right above that fund, 1169, but that can't be used for that.
Jay, have you made up your mind how much longer you want to work?
I thought you was out to sell.
I know that, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm curious.
I like the job, Dale, I like working with the guys down there, it's just a matter of my health, I'm not sure if my health matters anymore.
None of us know what's going to happen tomorrow.
I hate to plan too far ahead, you never know what's going to happen. You know what I mean?
Sure.
If you take Jay out of the equation, you're not going to find anybody to do that job for 26 to be a director. I just don't, that's qualified.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying, we've had people that was making 43.5, and right now, and on their per right now, they're not going to come down here and take a cut and weaken, so the 45, 45-9, whatever it is, looks to me like it's about them.
Jay, what are you making?
39.9 right now.
Okay, with all the years of experience you've got.
Right. And I actually have people making more these years already.
Well, ain't no doubt.
Because of all the overtime it kills us.
Ain't no doubt in my mind.
So...
But they don't get to take offs, I mean, tell you, you get to take off either, do they? You can go to lunch, you can go to lunch whenever you want to, can't you?
You want to come down and run it for me, so I can take some days off?
Well, I might be able to.
Barton, are you and Chris satisfied that there's no other legal way to get this done?
I have asked Chris, I've asked Chris to research it, Debbie has researched it.
We, I sent a memo and requested that Kent Irwin with Wagner Irwin and Shealy, who is our consultant on personnel matters... I forwarded it on, and, and there were, there were considerations, you know, about how to do it, how not to do it. I mean, the question was, could we pay him contractually rather than paying him? I, I don't think the IRS necessarily would, would agree with, I mean, I don't think that's the, the way to do it. The only other way for him to consider, to keep getting his perf.
No.
And to get his perf and work, would have to take the highway director's job and make it a non-perf job. So you'd have, there'd be some legal work, and what they said, you're technically not just supposed to have a, you're supposed to have like a thirty-day separation, I think, in employment. Wasn't that it, Chris?
And you can't.
Yeah.
And you can't knowingly do that.
And you can't knowingly, yeah. And you're, you're not supposed to do it with the idea that, you know.
But he's going to be coming back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So realistically, if we, if we keep Jay at forty-five-nine, we could raise the line up for the supervisor, for his job, and not increase the starting salary, right?
Well, then you still got, if you can't get that to go through, you still, well.
No, he can just, just retire and take it.
Well, that's what we've kind of done. You know, the starting pay stayed where it was when Jay came on, and we just changed the one forty-four, but didn't change.
Yeah.
But we all know, and, and that's, Russ, you know, you, that's the challenge, the, that the wage committee has, is to try to come to some, to, to a better starting pay, but then how do you justify that?
What did Jay start out at? What did we change it to?
Thirty-eight. I think Jay started out at thirty-eight, didn't you, Jay?
Yeah, I was thirty-eight.
So, Mr. Attorney, do you feel like that we're out of, we're out of options at this point?
You're referring to rehiring Jay after he's retired, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
I mean, if, to avoid any impropriety, yes. One option I would look, would be some sort of subcontract, but I'm not sure how that would work. We're running out of time.
And then that takes that out of a perf job, right, that you was talking about.
Well, if you made a contractual, then technically, you know, that they're not employed.
A subcontract is ten ninety-nine.
Yeah, they, they would get a ten ninety-nine from the county for what performed and.
Well, then you'd still, then you'd have to consider if they're, if they're contractual law, you know, you pay them insurance and all that, right?
Yeah.
So you'd have to, you'd have to raise it.
Oh, yeah, he, if you, if you made him.
He wasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'd have to, you'd have to contract for more than that to compensate for the insurance.
He wouldn't get any benefit.
Right.
Or that, that's.
So it's just as simple to, if you want to spend that money, to raise that up to the forty-five-nine salary and not retire.
It's put a lot of counties in the same place that we are in, trying, the fact that we're losing good, qualified employees that want, want to work farther into their career, I mean, you know, before retirement, but yet they're faced with this kind of dilemma.
My two cents in this to my counsel would be to take the, the advice of the commissioner and increase Jay's pay. It buys us a little time until Jay feels that he wants to retire, because we're not committing to the forty-five for the starting pay for a highway director. We're increasing his, the highway department can cover it. Basically, we're having to come up with another six thousand dollars, because of thirty-nine. Is it thirty-eight-nine or thirty-nine? What are you getting, Jay?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine-nine?
Yeah, I was thirty-nine-nine.
So basically, we're coming up with another five thousand, five hundred, five thousand six hundred.
Well, he really needs forty-five-nine to come out.
Well, to get, to get that number, we're going to come up with that difference between thirty-nine-nine, so.
Right.
That, that just buys us a little time. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Buying his time for what?
Well, he's going to retire at some point.
Right.
And right now, we're not committing to the forty-five for the starting pay. We're just increasing his to meet that, which will only impact on us now, still be the six thousand dollars.
Use, use, if he's going to retire, and we can't hire anybody, then use your surveyor, exactly like we did with Jerry Gobin. If we're going to, if we're going to increase his salary to twenty grand, with that, with that stipend from the state, then use it.
But that, but I don't think.
That does not increase his salary.
I don't think that's, that's a description of what.
Right now, we're not increasing it. We can increase it, but right now, we're not.
I don't think that's a description of, of a highway, of a county engineer.
But I'm saying, if it's a coverall, is, we've done it before with Jerry Gobin. If he's retiring, and we don't have nobody in his place, then use your surveyor. We've always done.
Well, we pay Jerry extra for that, too.
The surveyor was agreeing to do that. I don't know that the surveyor wants to be the highway supervisor. He's elected officially, he's not one of our employees, where we can, where we can mandate what he does.
That's your call, not mine. I'm just suggesting that. Not mine. That's the commissioner's call, not mine.
But, the, the best bet is to have Jay down there doing the job he's doing now. We've got a known quantity, and that highway department is running good. Morale's good. And if we hire somebody else, it's going to take, it's going to take that much money to do it.
It's going to take forty-five thousand to get somebody down there, is that what you're telling me?
What I'm, what I'm telling you is, the people, the people we interviewed were all making in that range.
But you're telling me it's going to take forty-five thousand to get somebody down here?
That, that's the way it appears. The people, the, the people that did apply.
How many of them already withdrew after they earned the salary?
Two withdrew.
Well, two, two, two people withdrew, no matter what the salary is, they don't want the job. Three people haven't said whether they would or not. They all said they could not afford to, to take this job at a reduction in salary of what they're, what they're making now. One of, one of them that withdrew altogether was making fifty-five thousand where he is. And one of them, one of them that hasn't withdrew, withdrawn yet, is making forty-three-five where he is.
What did, what did you guys advertise the salary as, when you advertised for help, or did you?
Didn't advertise, we did, it is not.
You didn't advertise the salary?
No.
So we got a guy here that we hired for thirty-eight thousand, that has, I don't know how many, thirty years of experience.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four years of experience. Now we're going to get some guys, we want to hire some guys that we're not sure that they can even do the job for forty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's why.
Why don't we have, why don't, why don't we start out as, as starting salary, we know that twenty-six thousand is too low. Why don't we start out at like thirty-seven thousand, or something like that?
I'm telling you, thirty-seven thousand won't do it.
We did it with him.
Those how many years?
With thirty-four years.
You did it with him because he was at the highway department. Is that, is that?
He didn't have to take the job over. Five people came in, no one else applied, right?
That's true.
But not even knowing what the salary was. So those people definitely wouldn't apply if it was thirty-seven, probably, we can assume. We don't know that, though, do we? Do we know that, Chris? Do we really know that? No, but if they weren't going to take a pay, we don't.
Yeah, we do know it. The people that applied, we know that, we know that they probably wouldn't, because they have told us. After we tell them what the starting salary is, there's no way we can consider.
Twenty-six thousand is the starting salary?
Russ, what they said was, is, is not, we're not going to take the job for anything less than what we're making now. And that's unreasonable. I, I think they expect anybody to do that.
So they were making forty-two and forty-five. If I'm in, if I'm unhappy where I'm working at, Barker, and I'm working for a company that I'm unhappy with, and your starting salary is thirty-eight-six or thirty-seven, and I'm making fifty, and I'm unhappy where I'm working, I'm going to take that job.
You're assuming.
If I'm not, if I'm not unhappy, then where am I looking?
You're assuming that they're unhappy. It may be closer for them.
Well, some, some people look for.
Guys, I've been in management for a long time, I'm telling you.
Some people look for a job, Russ, because they want to improve themselves.
If you're, if you're making forty-five thousand, we can't come up to forty-five thousand. If we can't come up to that forty-five thousand, you can't improve yourself.
And that's the reason the man said, I would have taken the job.
So basically, if you're saying, if, if we would have advertised a job at starting pay of twenty-six, you're probably saying, nobody would have applied, basically.
That's, that's the way it seems, because nobody applied, not knowing what the salary was.
Yeah.
And, and none of them, none of them wanted for even close to that.
Okay, so, a lot of things have been talked about. Let me get it clear. If, if we hired Jay at forty-five, would he be considered a part-time?
Forty-five, Jay has got it down to, to the science. It's forty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. It would take him to stay even with the loss of his pension when he does take it.
Okay, so you, that means you're actually still going to stay all as a full-time employee?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I just withdraw my retirement prefer for right now.
And he would take it to perf.
But you, you talked about possibly, could, could you take a perf now, come back as like a subcontractor?
That was, that was brought up as a question.
We kind of didn't get a.
You never got a reading on that, Jim?
I told you what.
Not that was the plan the whole time, definitely not, which, so they'd have to hire someone else, have it not work out, then we can.
You can't do with the intention of.
Of bringing him back.
And so we've already discussed it, so the intention's already there.
Well, I mean, it would be, I don't think it would take a rocket scientist to figure that out, if you were to look back and see, you know, the guy.
We're just talking about an employee taking himself out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I mean.
Well.
You know, it, it's, the situation is what it is. We can only work with what we got.
I got to talk to Rick about this.
And I, and I have asked all the people that, in the highway department, if anybody would want to apply, and nothing to do.
I've never seen a situation as unique as, as this particular one, and I know.
Well, this first deal has, has money definitely worked.
Exactly, yes. I, I just wonder how many more times this, this may happen to us in the future, in other departments, with other employees. That, that's something to worry about.
Well, Terry Cochran has said she would have rather worked on, rather than, but she doesn't want to lose that much to her perf, so.
So there's two.
That's why you're, that's why you're losing a qualified office manager in the health department, so.
Sure, yeah.
Hey, yours too, out of the, out of utilities department of the city, for the same reason.
Yes.
It's not a good situation, but it is what it is, so.
Yeah, and it's, since we've had all these discussions about it, it's too late to, to go back to square one and start over fresh and clean.
With.
I, I never felt comfortable as the administrator of the, you know, of the payroll and all that. I never particularly felt comfortable taking it out of a perf cover position, because that's a process you have to do, and you have to petition for her to do it. And then, then if, then if Jay were to retire in a couple of years, then we have to go back through that process to add that back in as a perf cover position. It just, the whole, that whole thing seemed just.
And they talk about that would be difficult, right, to take it back, once you're looking at it.
Yeah.
Well, if we do this, like it said, like you said, like, it buys us time. But as you said, Jay, you know about your health, I mean, you could be, you could work it six months, you could work two years, you don't know.
You don't ever know, that's just it.
The last thing about it is, we're not committing to a starting pay of forty-five thousand right now. We're just committing until Jay is here. Then we'll have to face this again.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was driving. We're going to have to face it eventually down the road. So to get somebody in that position, we're going to have to raise the starting salary, or we're never going to get anybody in that position, the way it sounds.
And that's where you're going to be in all these positions.
And their, and their, their budget, I mean, their cash in their fund is healthy enough to support it. Might be a whole different discussion if you were talking county general, you know, money, but you're not, you're talking.
I mean, I, I don't know what we're going to do, how this vote's going to go, but if it's voted down, what is our option then?
I have no idea. I mean, keep advertising and try and find somebody to take it for twenty-six-eight, I guess, but I wouldn't, you know, that's not much money for somebody that's on twenty-four-hour call, three hundred and sixty-five minutes a year.
I agree a hundred percent.
You know?
That's probably why you got nobody down there right now, is willing to take it, because they, why they want to take a pay cut and be on twenty-four-hour call.
Right.
And supervise thirteen people.
Yes, right. So.
So, yeah, to me, it looks like if Jay forty-five-nine could continue on and now retires, the best bet, whatever you people want to do is, we'll work with, try and work with.
Well, is there any more discussion, or do you want to, somebody want to propose a motion for either or?
Well, we, there's no need for us to sit here all night and, and think about it. We're either going to do it or we're not.
Right.
Just to get this thing off top dead center, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve this change in the, is this a new one forty-four, or is this a change in the salary order?
It really needs to be forty-five.
Well, you do the one forty-four, and then you come back and change salary orders.
Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve the requested one forty-four for the highway director's position, as it's been presented.
It's a forty-five-nine.
It says it's forty-five.
We've ruled it down.
Yeah, it's a change.
Forty-five thousand, nine hundred.
There you go.
Okay. I'll put a pair on that Z over there.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the one forty-four for the adjustment of salary in the amount of forty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. Is there a second? If there's no second, then I guess the motion dies.
Right. Now, I don't know what direction to go.
I don't either. I mean, I told you what the situation is. You got, you got the jobs, you got to be filled. You can't run the department without a supervisor. You can't just tell thirteen people down there to just figure out what they want to do every day.
Is the advertisement still going for the?
Yeah.
No, no, we, we, the advertisement, we've already interviewed the people.
I mean, did you ever post a salary, you don't, with a county general?
But why, I mean, there's no reason to think you would get more people to apply when, if you say, well, twenty-six thousand is all you're going to get, when we just got five people, and they didn't know.
Well, if I understand the situation correctly, as it stands right now, your only alternative is to take the highway director's position out of the perf system.
And we, yeah.
For, for this specific case. For this specific case, and let Jay continue to work.
No.
And then do it.
No, that's illegal.
You can't do that.
Okay, I've got that, got the whole thing backwards. So we can know that.
He'll have to retire, he can't stay.
The only way he could do that is if he did that without the intent of coming back, without without getting rid of the perf position, and then the perf position goes away, and he comes back and says, oh, hey, I want the job again, right?
Yeah.
The only thing I can think is if if commissioners can't find anybody at all to take the position, you know, maybe, I don't know, at some later point in time, you could contract with Jay to come in an interim period or something, I don't know.
If we contract with someone, though, we still have to have sufficient funds to offer them into contract.
That's right.
And that would require an increase well above the twenty-six-eight that we've been talking about. So we're back to right where we are right here tonight.
Yeah.
And all those people were talking about the forty-five, you know, they was all expecting to get insurance too on top of that. So if you contract, then you're talking about that much money plus money for insurance, and it's not gonna be any cheaper.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to help solve this problem. I wish I had the magic bullet for this one, but I'll tell you, this, this is, I've never seen one like this.
Is it the number, the forty-five-nine that's not getting a second? Is there another number we need to come up with? Congressman Plow?
Jim, what are you thinking? You're gonna be in my position next year, and you hopefully.
Well, I don't know if I am or not.
Well, I mean, you're hoping to be, so if you was, what would you want to happen if you was standing up here?
I'm not in that position yet, I'll wait till I get in that position if I do.
I've got a question. You say his perf will use a hundred and fifty a year.
A hundred and fifty a month.
There's a hundred and fifty dollars a month drop in what you draw.
Well, what about your social security every year that you don't draw, you're gonna gain, too, you.
You'll gain on your social security before you draw, but you're losing, you're losing money you're not gonna make up on your perf. Because that's five hundred and fifty a year, a month, the next year, you're adding another hundred and fifty on top of that, and that's like doubling it next year, because you're actually losing three hundred, because it drops you percent every year for three years.
For how many years?
It drops a percent a year for three years, and on the fourth year, it drops down to whatever the prime rate is, which is about two percent. So you're actually gonna drop about five percent total.
So when you when you did your calculations, did you take it out to four years?
Oh, I was by what they sent me. They sent me, I contacted them to check on it, because I heard what was going on, and they sent me a letter.
Yeah.
And get the calculations on the letter.
Okay.
The state highway department has a policy when people retire, they hold a retirement party for them. I was told by a former employee that they have so many people retired because of this perf change that they're doing one party once a month in a region as opposed to different parties. And it's all gets that way all across the state for people who are covered under this section of perf. They're living in droves, but they're like, who is money?
Yeah, I understand why the people are leaving, I don't blame you, because the city and utilities had a couple of people already.
Right.
So I don't blame you for Jay for doing what you're doing.
It's a no-brainer, you can't do something for it, you gotta do it.
I understand that, but.
Wednesday, he said to retire.
August eighth.
Well, I just hope between now and August the eighth, someone can think of something that'll work with this. I don't know what it would be right now.
I don't know what it would be. I mean, you're not, you're just not gonna get anybody for twenty-six-eight, you just.
No, I'm sure you're not.
You know, and really, we shouldn't be talking about just anybody either. I mean, the man's gotta have some call cases, go down and run that department.
Yeah, but down the road, we do know we're gonna, we're gonna have to face this head-on, even if Jay.
Right, so really, now the time.
Gonna stay two more years, we're still gonna have to face it later.
But you gotta face it right now.
Right. Of course, you know, there's no way Jay, Jay's right, he could, he could say, I wanna stay two more years, but he doesn't know whether.
We don't know, you know, he might stay ten, he might stay six months, whatever he can do.
Right, yeah. I don't, I don't buy green bananas for the same reasons. I don't know if I'll see him get it right, but.
So what he wants to do, I mean, it's.
I, Martin, I wish I had a solution.
We understand, but they don't wanna give the raise, I guess, so what do they want?
Have people said that they think a surveyor can do that job too?
Well, number one, I don't know if we can even.
First of all, they're elected.
Officially, they didn't tell them to do that.
And has prescribed duties.
Right.
I guess the action we've chosen to take is to take our head and see him.
Of course, the surveyor, I'm just saying, we got twenty thousand dollars, would he be willing to do it for twenty thousand additional dollars?
But I think that's going against you. I'm, I think the way that, I think a way that, there's something drawn up that I have to send in.
I thought he already was the civil engineer.
No, he's actually the county coordinator, which is, we add twelve thousand dollars to his, the, to the standard pay for the elective officials. And that's what he's currently making, which doesn't qualify to get reimbursed for.
So we're willing to do twenty thousand versus six thousand.
There is a code in there for the highway, for the, not the highway engineer, but there is a code in there for the county engineer, what those duties are. I mean, what the state reimburses money for, and I think it's mostly for, it's mostly for bridge projects and the like.
And surveyor might ask you for that twenty thousand dollars, or the eight thousand, these will be given with a coordinator for being the engineer. Where's getting it from the state, I mean?
Oh, I know, he's going to.
Well, he's indicated to us that he, you know, and I don't blame him for that, but, you know.
Well, I would say right now is, if the surveyor's not willing to do it, and we don't find somebody, or we won't make a decision, you know, possibly change our mind if, you know, next, next me, next month, and Jay retires, and we don't find somebody to do it, then I'd say you three commissioners, I have to take turns going down there once a week and running. One week a month. I'm just throwing it out, whatever choice we have.
Well, you hire people according to their knowledge.
You hire people according to their knowledge.
But Russ says that's been done before.
It's been done before.
He says it's been done before.
It's been done before.
You hire people according to their knowledge, okay? I don't have that kind of knowledge, nor, and I can't speak for the commissioner's not here, nor for Barton, okay? But you have a chance to keep thirty-four years' worth of experience for an additional, basically, six thousand dollars, and you turned that down. So how long has there been a position of highway department supervisor? Jay's position.
As long as I've been around, which is a long time.
So at what point was there one person who served as a supervisor?
In the past, we've used a surveyor, whenever we got, in between, superintendent's, or whatever you wanna call them. We've used a surveyor on a short-term. You go down and unlock the door, give them orders, and then come back every, and do, in his office, and then them guys did their own.
But until you were able to find it.
Till you was able to find a supervisor, superintendent, whatever you call him now.
We're still not.
But here's guys just.
Are you still?
Well, then, then we've gotta work on Jack, or Frank, we've gotta work on, we gotta work on the starting ordinance, or of that starting salary thing again. But as for starting forty-five-nine, I'll be very honest with you, I am not looking at forty-five-nine starting salary.
Well, what?
Not for that highway department.
Well, what are you?
There's a number out there.
Well, he gave forty-five.
I think, I can't believe that we're gonna give a guy that we don't know if he can do the job or not, if we hire one of those guys you guys have interviewed. Forty-five-nine, we got a guy sitting over there, we started him out at thirty-eight, been there thirty-four years, and we give him thirty-eight. But we don't know if these guys can do the job or not.
Well, it.
That's what I'm saying.
I understand, I agree with that, Russ, but, and I agree with that, but using that logic, then why?
I'm using it as logic.
All right, then why wouldn't, why wouldn't it be a better bet to give Jay the money, who you know can do the job, than talk about giving that money to somebody?
But I have a problem, like Dale said, we're setting the example here that we're gonna do that for Jay, why aren't we doing that for Teresa Crawford, or whatever, Teresa, or Terry?
Well, I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna have the problem with all, with all these employees.
I mean, I mean, we can't subsidize those guys' benefits, the county can't do that.
I'm not, and we're not asking you to do that. What I'm telling you is, the candidates that we have that applied for this job, it's gonna take that much money to hire anybody.
We don't know whether they can do it or not, that's what I'm saying, the starting salary is, we gotta go with a starting salary somewhere or another. We can't, and I don't believe in forty-five-nine.
I have a motion, move it up.
I really don't.
Okay, of all the candidates, five candidates, was there anybody that was qualified that could, that had the experience to do that job? I mean, I know you said they didn't wanna take it, they made money.
There was, there was a couple that was pretty impressive, that has worked on highways, I don't know if they've done, always done that, but the one that sticks in my mind as a good qualified candidate is making forty-three-five.
Forty-three-five, okay.
Supervisor.
Is that person a supervisor?
He is, he is a supervisor.
Right now?
Yes, he is. So we're upright, right, well, we've been talking about all night long.
David, can the salary, can the starting salary, have we advertised, we can't do anything because of the starting salary, right? We can't set a starting salary for this highway department tonight.
Yeah, you could, you could, yes, you could. You did it when, when Jay went in, you raised it from the twenty-six-eight, twenty-five to thirty-eight at that time.
The starting salary.
No, you never changed the starting salary, you just, you just did a one forty-five and hired.
He's asking if he can, if they can change the starting salary for the position tonight.
You could, you could make a motion, and we have, then you could, you could make, yes, you could change the ordinance. It just has to be advertised, the change to it after, within, I think, thirty days or whatever after, so.
But if your starting salary is not come within the range of the people that we interviewed, three of whom, like I said, are in that forty-three to forty-five thousand dollar range, they are not going to take the job where they're on call twenty-four seven and supervise thirteen people and a three million dollar budget. They're just not gonna do that for less money.
And I understand what you're saying, Frank, but I'm not, I'm not willing to start out anybody at forty-five-nine either. When we, when we did it to a guy that's gonna retire, thirty-some years of service, and we get him at thirty-eight? We're taking, we're taking, we're our new people. Our, our starting salary, we, our starting salary is, we'll say it's gonna be thirty-eight thousand dollars, that's our starting salary. Guys, you gotta take it or leave it.
And, and so far, I've agreed to leave it, but if, if you're willing to give that kind of money for, for experience, why not go ahead and raise Jay's salary up and go on down the road?
I'm not, I'm not for subsidizing somebody's to retirement like that, because we can't do it to anybody else.
You're not subsidizing retirement, what you're doing is paying what he's gonna lose.
Yeah, I'm not, we can't do it to anybody else, I'm not willing to do it to him, I mean, personally, that's my own personal opinion.
Gentlemen, just tell us, just tell us what it is you wanted, and we'll go on from there.
I don't, I'm not like, Dale, I ain't sure what we wanna do. I mean, I don't know.
Well, I don't either, but, you know, the decisions has to be made, and the man's gonna retire the eighth of August, so we have to, we have to do something. You know, I understand you're the one that makes the voluntary decisions, but we have to know what that is.
I mean, if we agree that twenty-six is inappropriate in certain ways, then what is? If you don't think it's forty-five-nine, then what is it?
What is mine? If we, if we start Jay out with the experience that he had at thirty-eight, I can get in, I can get into thirty-eight, starting salary for the highway department. Personally, I mean, that's my own personal opinion, I mean, real.
But our, but our problem for us is that we advertised, and you, all we had to do was see the look on all the gentlemen's faces when we told them what the starting salary was.
If you told him twenty-six.
What'd you tell him the salary was, twenty-six?
Twenty-six-eight.
Twenty-six-eight.
Well, we raised thirty-eight.
Well, we'll see what happens.
We're still below what those people are making.
Still below what they're making.
Well.
Re-advertise.
Advertise.
Go ahead and re-advertise.
Maybe you got some guy out there one thirty-eight, be happy with it.
We didn't, we didn't advertise, they didn't know what it was, and we got what we got.
Are there certifications or qualifications that they have to have to do that?
One guy was a prior.
No, are there certifications and qualifications that they have to have?
We have, we have the same position description that was qualifications in him. If there aren't certifications, except, I think it's best if they have C D Ls.
They have to have C D Ls.
When is the next meeting?
Our next meeting's August fifth, and he's seventh is his.
The eighth is, you know, and three days before he retires, it's kind of late to get an answer what we're gonna do.
Plus, he needs to.
Well, I mean, he's in plan, if we don't do something, he's gone, you know.
You could.
Mike, can we, can we call, can we call a meeting next week, let's, on this thing, on this salary thing here, these guys are wanting forty-five-nine. We're not really, everybody's not really sure what they wanna do with that, is, can we have a special meeting for, can we, can we call it?
You can always have, you can always have a special meeting, you just date what you're gonna discuss at that special meeting.
And discuss the starting salaries.
And discuss the starting salary.
Well, what you can't, here is my suggestion.
People think it should be, we can talk about it right now.
Do what now?
What do you guys think it should be, thirty-eight? We could, why not just talk about it right now?
Well, I'm not sure these guys are thinking that, or.
My suggestion, my suggestion would, would be to go ahead and approve a one forty-four with whatever, with a new hire salary on it, if, you know, for a new hire, and then change the starting salary ordinance next year to make that in line with that, so you don't have this discussion. I don't think you, in the past, we have hired, you approved people to be hired above that, you know, to be brought on above that. I think when Michelle came on, it was like.
I was pulling to you.
It was, yeah, but I don't think we changed the starting salary, we just approved her one forty-four, and then adjusted the starting salary ordinance last year.
You know, in, in most, most businesses or operations, you pay what, what that job requires, what they can get someplace else.
Companies are averaging.
Well, we have that information, and, you know, that information is in.
We probably should have had a hearing, so we could talk about it. I mean, if they're, if they're twelve thousand dollars, which we know they're not, if everybody's at forty-five, or forty-six, or forty-eight, or fifty, or thirty-eight, it'd be kind of nice to know what that averages.
Like I said, we have went through the process and know more.
Do you want me to go get that?
We did, we wanna know what won't work.
Because I think that'll put a lot of this to rest and demonstrate the fact that twenty-six is ridiculous.
Why don't we give them a percentage over the highest paid man?
There you go.
Yeah, I think he should be over top of the highest paid man.
If you're highest paid man, then maybe add ten percent or worse.
Who is the highest paid man?
Do you know, I don't know.
I think you said about what he made if you factor in overtime, but.
No, he said the highest, somebody that made more than him.
With overtime, right.
More, so I just saw that, I don't have it with me, but I saw it clear, I think thirty-six, I'm looking at thirty-six, thirty-seven is the highest.
So ten percent more than that would be forty.
Thirty-six hundred. Thirty-six hundred.
Forty thousand.
Thirty-six hundred.
But add that to the thirty-six.
Forty-three, sixty.
So, someone in the department right now makes thirty-six thousand base salary, not the supervisor.
I'd, I'd personally like to think about this, cause actually, think about this a little bit.
I agree with Mark.
Have, have, see what is the date of first.
Chris, what, what one of the salary, wage salary things says on here is that the mechanic makes thirty-six thousand, one oh nine, is what it says on here. Now, whether that's right or not, I don't know. That's one of the-
Or what?
For the garage mechanic, and then your heavy equipment operator makes thirty-four thousand, oh five nine. And then you've got some truck drivers making thirty, your truck drivers making thirty-three eight forty-two.
I mean, the supervisor would have to make more than them, right?
Supervisor, our supervisor is making thirty-nine-two.
Twenty-six is what it is now.
Starting, starting. So, he's, what he's making now is thirty-nine-two. I mean, just, we've always, we always know about these starting salaries that are completely out of whack, way out.
Yeah, we've talked about it. Why are you committing?
It's my committing.
Yeah.
See if you're talking to him.
It's just a thirty-six.
So, the highest paid has, thirty-four, thirty-four, maybe sixty, maybe thirty-seven.
Highway supervisor. Highway supervisor in the, in the population bracket we're in, twenty to twenty-five thousand. And this is two thousand thirteen numbers. Fulton County has a population of twenty-eight, thirty-six, forty-six thousand, four twenty-seven. Jay County, forty-seven, nine sixty-five. Owen County, forty-six, oh fourteen. Scott, forty-five thousand. Spencer, thirty-nine, nine twenty-five. Stark, thirty-seven, three forty-two. White, fifty-seven, seven.
Sophia, average bills they do about, they're asking.
Up above here, Clay County, thirty-eight, nine seventy-three.
What's the auditors make?
Decatur, forty-three, four oh six. Wells, forty-seven, eight ninety.
What's the auditors make?
You probably don't even know that. On the first Tuesday of the month, they should get some kind of special, special duty pay.
Stifling pay. We call it stifling around here.
Yeah. I'm going to get me started on that. I mean, they're all over the board. Whitley County, sixty-four, nine seventy-nine. Stu, no, wait, that's the engineer. I'm sorry. Whitley, fifty-five, three oh five. Forty-seven, forty-two.
Yeah, it's good.
They're just all up there, but most of them are in the forty range.
You've heard what some of the averages are, the pays are. I mean, to me, if you do the average, the highest, with fifty-seven, fifty-five, whatever, down to thirty-seven, do an average, that's about what they're asking. So, if you guys want to have a special meeting, just have a special meeting, we can do that.
You know, if everyone wants to sleep on this, that's okay. Sometimes you have to think about these things a while, and Shirley hasn't been here tonight.
True.
She's not had a chance to be warmed on the energy. So, if you guys want to go home and sleep on this and come back another day for a special meeting, that's okay with me. I'm not, I've got no objection.
Well, yeah, because you're the repairman chairman, so what makes you do that?
No, now, Russ, don't you start that. I'm not, I'm, I don't want to push anyone in any direction they don't want to go, for sure, but...
I'll make a motion, we have a special meeting on July fifteenth.
On second.
At six P.M., just like we normally do here.
On second. So, what are you going to be talking about next week?
No, the week after. Well, this is the first, fifteenth.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today.
Gentlemen, we still have, we still have to, we'll have to advertise again and interview again, and you're going to be right close to Jay's quitting time, or retirement time.
All I want to discuss in here is if we want to change this starting salary, as a motion, it may-
Next week's the first.
Next week?
You're, you're cutting our time.
That, that's okay with me, if you want to do it on the eighth.
You're going to be, you're going to be here next week at one o'clock.
I wonder, did you want to add to discuss what, you know, after you, you guys meet, what?
That's fine with me.
Engineer, I mean, do you want me to put, include that? If you're going to discuss that, I have to include it.
Well, Mike, it was just you and I and you, Barton, and we were going to meet with Dave right next week.
Well, that's what I meant. If you were going to discuss anything about that prior to the office-
But if we wanted you all, we want everybody for that, so you'd have to, is there time to advertise that?
For what?
Special meeting is forty-eight hour notice.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight hour notice.
That's fine with me.
And it's the fifteenth at six, is that what?
No, we're talking about the eighth.
Oh, okay.
We're meeting one.
How do you think that's going to turn?
That's what I was going to say, what do you think, we want to allow that an hour, hour and a half?
That's the seventh. Monday, the seventh.
An hour and a half would be, would be plenty, right? So, yeah, at one.
It's Monday, the seventh.
We just got a special meeting at two thirty.
I never heard of that. You, you guys were discussing, I never did that. So, it's Monday, the seventh at one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's when we're going to meet with, with-
That's not for the, that's not for the wage thing, Mark.
Right, that's the building.
Mark Navi, calls him a Navi.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we meet at one, and then let's say we allow, let's say we allow an hour, and if we got to talk a little bit more than that, let's say, let's call this meeting at two, and then we can break, meet this meeting at two, and if we got to go back and revisit that.
That saves everybody coming down here twice.
Okay, Monday. Okay, Monday at one, and then, and then the special meeting at two.
Two o'clock.
So, we're going to say, to discuss highway super-
I've been at, I've been at this the whole day and day, so.
Didn't take a vacation, you'd be here all day.
And county highway garage plans, something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, Mike, you know, if you, I'll get you to the audience.
No, I can look at, that's not the problem. What are you, special meeting for what now? You're talking what?
Ten o'clock. Yeah, so I got all day.
He said, discuss highway superintendent pay and county highway garage plans.
That's my motion, Jim's second, and so.
Do you have to, do you have to advertise the change of the starting salary?
I just-
I mean, legally, you get this thing, the starting, one of the starting salaries changed?
I think what you're meeting to decide on the one forty-four, if you want to, if you want to change the-
Well, you could have.
Might as well put the starting salary in.
The starting salary or, or Jay at one, whichever way you decide, you might as well put it all in there, right?
Starting salary, I think, we need to, we, if we're going to do this, instead of just what we did last time with Jay, we need to change the starting salary.
You still have to have a one forty-four. You still have to have a one forty-four, even if, even if you, even if you start a new person at starting pay, you still have a one forty-four.
But they want to change the starting salary, I think, so does that need to be specified?
Yeah, I put-
And we can look at the other starting salary and change it too, can't we? If we advertise as a starting salary or salaries?
Whatever.
I mean, if we, there's others starting salaries in here just as sickening as this one.
Right, but what I'm saying, if you're, if Monday, you're going to discuss both raising Jay's salary up or moving the starting salary up, advertise both ways, you can talk about whatever you want to then, either one of them.
Discuss highway superintendent starting salary. Current superintendent, I mean, you know.
Changing current superintendent salary.
You're just-
Can they think about, about both of them?
And county highway garage plans. Is that okay? For everyone that made the motion and seconded it.
So, we got a motion to whatever Mark said, I have no idea what he said now.
But Debbie can read, you can read.
A motion to have a special meeting on July seventh at two P.M. to discuss highway superintendent starting salary, changing current superintendent salary, and county highway garage plans, which was seconded by Mr. Wolf.
Okay, motion second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
We have no unfinished business, we have no new business, we have no transfers, no more additional, the auditors ineligible deductions.
That's me. I, last month, you gave me an additional, and this is in, this is in a separate fund, there's money in there. I asked for two thousand per equipment to get some, to get some shelving downstairs in the basement, and then shelving in my office for some temporary storage. And then, I have, the, this morning, the commissioners approved, I had a couple bids for recording software and boundary mics that will plug into my laptop, and I can digitally record the meetings, and there's software that goes in it to where I, I download my agenda, and it will book, it can bookmark areas where I can go back and listen to things I need to listen to, and it will greatly help me with, with the minutes. And that's what I'm asking for, that for, not three thousand dollars.
Any questions?
Yeah, what was the bids?
One was thirty-one. I have it over here, Mike. One was for three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, and the other bid was for three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight. There's not a lot of companies that provide that type of software and, and microphone package.
What company's satisfying?
B.I.S. was the one, was the low bid. They, they also, I know the, the city, they have some, I think in their police interview room, has some of that software. I don't know whether, I don't think it's necessarily identical to, to this software. And then I think B.I.S. is also in the, in the courts for digital recordings.
Any more questions?
And where you saying it's getting money from?
Auditors ineligible deduction fund. It's not from county general.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries.
Well, because you're going to be a wish to report, so that means you can be recorded. Some reason why you may not.
You're checking.
You're checking.
Yeah.
Moving on to one forty-fours, the auditor.
Beth Richardson, in my office, accepted a job with the Union County Auditor's Office. While we're discussing salaries, this is not for argumentative purposes, it's just for informational purposes. When she worked for me, she had, she had worked for me for seven years. Her salary was nineteen-two sixty-nine here after seven years, and she walked in the door at Union County for twenty-four thousand. And here, she was paying, I think, a single plan insurance, she was paying around a hundred and, hundred and twenty dollars a month or so for her insurance. Her insurance over there is a penny a month. So, what I, the one forty-four is a different amount than hers. I was approached by Terry Cabbins in the clerk's office, and she, I interviewed Terry, and she will be starting-
Gentlemen?
She will be starting down in my office on the fourteenth, and her pay, she has ten years, and the way the salary ordinance is worded, it's the same starting salary, it's the same, you know, job, job classes, so she would start it, she would bring her pay down here with her at twenty thousand, nine forty-eleven. Then I also have a one forty-four. Melinda couldn't be here tonight, but that creates an opening in Melinda's office, and that will be at starting pay of sixteen, seven forty-seven to Melinda. So, at the next month's meeting, I will bring a reduction in Melinda's appropriation and an increase in my appropriation, so there won't be any additional to county general to make up the difference in Terry's salary.
So, you're saying this is an even?
Yeah.
Even swap.
Well, it'll end up being overall for county general. Well, actually, it'll be a little bit less, because we're, well, I don't know, maybe by the time you add the one in, and, yeah, well.
Does Melinda still like you? For stealing her health?
Yeah, we discussed, and she's, she's fine. She has, she has someone lined up to start, so.
Entertaining motion to accept the one forty-fours?
I'll make a motion to accept the one forty-fours.
There's a motion on the floor to accept the one forty-fours, we'll have a second.
On second.
It's been motion and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. I said, motion carries.
Well, you're setting yourself up, aren't you?
Okay. Mr. Sprague, do you have any patron concerns?
No.
You don't patron up, we run everybody off. Okay, if we have no patron concerns-
We're talking about starting salary?
See how you can make head to tail in this meeting.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Do we want to have a discussion on that?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
We're even two.